Make way for you to take that seat. You are ready to be county supervisor for District Four and for all the constituents in the county, and you have, you've earned it.
Thank you.
And I have worked with you for the last 12-plus years, and many people, our colleagues, on the Board of Supervisors, county staff, members of the community, have worked with you over these 12 years. And so they know how smart you are, how energetic you are in the pursuit of excellence and respect and your, and the values that we want to bring to public service. And so it's especially powerful for me to be here today and to just, together with your family and with all the people who supported you through the long campaign, to be able to say, this is the day that you've been working for, that you've earned, and that you're ready for. I think what, what the staff and the constituents will, can expect from you is what you have done all this time, you're just in a slightly different role. They can expect clarity. You speak clearly, you articulate what your thinking process is and your vision for how work can be done. You can also, they can also be sure that respect is at the core of what you do. You respect yourself, you respect the, the people that you work with, and you respect the people that you work for. I've seen you with constituents, they call, they need answers, they need solutions. And what you do is you listen and you determine, we can't solve everything, you determine what is it that the county can do. And then you link that person with the resources so they can do for themselves what's available, and you support them along the way. So respectful. And I think, and that's going to be something that people are going to see over and over and over again. And then your values. You are going to stick to your values. And, and some of those have to do with the quality of service that we as the county can deliver to the public. As I've said many times, if we do a good job, we touch so many people's lives in so many ways, if we do a good job, we make the quality of life better for people in Monterey County. If we don't, we're just another pain in their neck as they're trying to live their lives. And I know that you will be doing what you can to make sure that we are improving the quality of life. And some of the ways that you've been clear that that can happen is communication. The staff and constituents of the community are going to hear you over and over and over again, talking about the ways that we can communicate better between ourselves, we can collaborate across departments a lot better than we do, we can communicate with the, with the community always better than we do, always. And I know that's been your song from the beginning, it will continue to be. And also the collaboration, it's partly communication, but it's working together as well, again, internally, across county departments, and with the community. You've been all about that this whole time. And so, and it's also about problem solving. We're not just talking to each other, we're, we're communicating, we're collaborating to problem solve, to make life better. So I know that you will be all about that still. And the other thing about you that I'm sure the staff is well aware of, and the community as well, is just do it. No more excuses. So look out, everybody, here she comes. So Wendy, I just, there are two things I want to, when I was thinking about you in this moment, there are a couple of lines from the Metta Sutra, which is one of the things in Buddhist philosophy that really, to me, one speaks to who you are. And this, and this one is, "Even as a mother at the risk of her life watches over and protects her only child, so with a boundless mind should one cherish all living things." That, to me, sums up who you are and how you approach your work. And then I want to leave you with something that has meant so much to me over my time as a supervisor. It's also from the Metta Sutra, and to me, it speaks to who you are and what I hope will always be true for you in this, in this job. Let one be strenuous, upright, and sincere, without pride, easily contented, and joyous.
Thank you.
Enjoy the heck out of the job, Wendy.
Thank you.
You'll be great.
Thank you.
All right. Give them hugs. All right.
All right. We're going to get some comments later on from Supervisor Askew, but congratulations, Supervisor. At this point, I want to turn over to Supervisor Luis Alejo, who is being sworn in today by his mother, Maria Luisa Covarubias, via Zoom. So at this point, I'll go ahead and ask our Zoom moderator to spotlight them and give them the floor.
Thank you.
Good morning. I-
Go ahead, Mama.
Okay. I just want to, with my son in, please state and, and repeat after me. I, could you state your name?
I, Luis Alejo.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. I, whatever. Can you hear me? To the Constitution of the United States.
I think she froze. Wait a minute, hold on. Hold on one moment, it looks like his video is frozen.
There you go. Technical difficulty here. You want to start over?
Jorge, can you unmute Maria Alejo?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Let's start, let's start over again, Mom. Sorry, that's why we need to fix the digital divide here.
Okay, well, we can start over again.
Yeah.
Could you raise the right hand again and repeat after me? I, could you state your name?
I, Luis Alejo.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I, I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, son. And can I say something also? I want to say that my, my son has worked really hard. As a mom, I, I've seen all his work that he has done, not only here in Monterey, but in California, whole state of California. I want to say that he has worked very hard for the people of this state of California, and his action shows it. The people know and recognize that he has worked hard for them. Since he was young age, going to Berkeley, going to David Law School, going to Harvard University, he has tried his best to represent the people of California, not only here as a supervisor, as a symbol man, as a mayor of Watsonville. And I'm very proud to say that, that he's done a lot of work for the people, and I'm very proud of him.
We're all proud of you, Luis.
And, and I know that he will continue to serve the people of Monterey with his heart and his hard work that he does all the times, representing them. Thank you, son. I'm very proud of you.
Mama, thank you.
Congratulations, Supervisor Alejo, and we'll have some moments ahead for you to share some comments with us on your reelection and your new four years with us here on the Board of Supervisors. At this point, we're going to turn and head over to Judge Silver, who is actually in room with Supervisor Adams. Retired Judge Silver is going to administer the oath of office to Supervisor-elect Mary Adams. We'll turn the floor over to them and ask Jorge to go ahead and spotlight them for everybody on Zoom to get a better view.
I wish I could swear in several times. All right. Here we go. I'm ready. I, Mary L. Adams-
I, Mary L. Adams-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend the Constitution-
That I will support and defend the Constitution-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith-
And allegiance to the Constitution-
And allegiance to the Constitution-
The United States-
Of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith-
And allegiance to the Constitution-
And allegiance to the Constitution-
The United States-
Of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well-
And that I will well-
And faithfully- Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Thank you.
I think there should probably be one more part of you, though. But you will get rid of this nasty virus.
I will try.
It's, it's been a difficult year, a difficult time for all of us. The fact that we are here now, swearing in the new supervisors through Zoom, is both a testament to our going forward and making changes and adapting to things, but it is also an indication of the difficulties and problems that we face, not only in this county, but in our state and in this world. I've had the, attended a Zoom funeral for a dear aunt of mine. I attended a Zoom bat mitzvah for my granddaughter in Toronto. I did a Zoom wedding of my son in New York. And now I have the honor of doing my very first Zoom swear-in, my very, very close and dear friend, Mary Adams. I want to also congratulate Supervisor Askew for her coming to the board. She obviously has been a very significant part of the county for a long time, working with Supervisor Parker, and I think she will bring that experience to bear as she moves forward in the next four years. She now has to recognize that the buck stops with her. And I'm sure she'll spin that buck wisely as we move forward. I also want to congratulate Supervisor Alejo for his election and returning to the Board of Supervisors. But most of all, most of all, I want to congratulate you. It was four years ago that I had this oath to you, as you set out on your first journey of four years as supervisor for the fifth district in the county of Monterey. I said then that I'm confident that the ability, the fact, the issue that faced our county that time, the development, the economic, and those issues have been around for a long time. Fortunately, we still deal with them, and they'll take your leadership and skills along with the rest of the Board of Supervisors to continue to find adequate solutions for the supply of water on the peninsula and the safety of water in the Salinas Valley. Critical issues have been going on since 1980, when I first issued the order to cut back on the Cardo Valley River. So it's been a long time, and we'll still take your skills and efforts to deal with all of those issues, show that you can do it. Four years that you've been on the board that time, and the leadership and ability to just solve the problems, helping to solve those problems. Unfortunately, we have probably a bigger problem that we have to solve first, and it, it just cannot go unsaid. You and the other members of the board, along with county staff, have been working diligently for the past year to try to find ways to meet the challenges of COVID in our county. It's been an up and down process, there's been accolades and there's been criticism, and there's really hasn't been a lot of good answers. And it's because of you and the hard work of the other members of the board that our county is, is doing as good as it can in these very difficult situations. The next four years and this next year is going to be very critical in that process. We've got to find ways for people to understand that wearing a mask or not wearing a mask isn't really a constitutional right, any more than shouting fire in a crowded movie theater is. It's a protection for us all, an ability for us all to move forward. You have been at the forefront of getting people to understand the importance of wearing a mask. The next four, six months is going to be critical in that process. We're not quite social distancing, but we're close. We're very close. But dealing with those protocols is going to be so, so much more critical in this next few months. The vaccine is here, other parts of the country have had difficulties in getting the vaccine out. I happened to be in Chalk the other day and saw them very efficiently working to give the vaccine shot to members of the staff at, at the hospital. Obviously, we need to take care of our frontline people first in that process. But we also have to find ways to make sure that we can administer that vaccine to all of the people in our county efficiently. It's been a problem in other areas, and I think it's up to your leadership and the leadership of the board to make sure it moves smoothly here. If we can do all of those things, then it will be the leadership of all of you together to, to bring this county back to where it was. We will, it's, it is certainly a function of saving lives, that's critical, but it's also the economic lifeblood of our county. And how you folks are going to re-energize this county, to get the restaurants open, to get the businesses open, to get people back to work, is going to be a real challenge as you move forward in the next year to two years. It's a long process. I'm confident from knowing you for 50 years, that you will bring that leadership to, to the board, and not only that, but work confidently with the other members of the board, to find workable solutions in this process. There is no more critical issue that, that we face in our, in our county and in your district. I was pleased to see that you ran unopposed this year. It was a testament of the respect that the members and the people of your district have to you in, in the work that you've done for the last four years. I'm confident that, that with your leadership and your ability to work with people, your ability to solve problems, get through this, it just takes all of us. I think you said at that time, last four years ago, that the, your belief was in the power of local government. And that's, that's the truth. Things can happen all over this state and all over this country, but we have the power right here to make sure we do it right. And I'm confident that you will do that. So I'd love to hug you. And I can't do that, so let me just offer you my sincere congratulations, not only from myself, but from all the members of the fifth district, which I am one, and the rest of the people in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. There we go.
At this point, we're going to turn to take comments by our newly sworn in supervisors, and the first one up is Supervisor Askew. Supervisor Askew, I see you there in the closed chambers, and we'll go ahead and turn the floor back over to you.
Fabulous. Thank you so much, Supervisor Lopez, Chair Lopez, I should say. I just have a few comments to make today. I want to, I want to thank Supervisor Jane Parker for, for, for all of your mentorship, for all of your leadership, for allowing me the opportunity in the past to grow into my own role as a community leader. I, I could go on and on, but it's just been an absolute honor to work with you, to learn from you, and to have you here today to, to, to welcome me to the board and to, to bestow the oath of office for me. So thank you, Jane, forever and always. I think the legacy that you've left on our county will be felt for generations, so I look forward to continuing the work. I want to thank Nativedad ICU nurse Jennifer John-Pierre for welcoming us with the Pledge of Allegiance today, our national anthem, trio Rosalind Charles and Alisa Mitchell and Emily Y. C. McLean for invoking, invoking our, our national anthem to get us started today. The, I spent two years campaigning to, to come onto the seat, and there were a lot of opportunities to hear from the community, even more so than I typically do on a day-to-day basis. And the, the things that, that I heard loud and clear from people were that they want to see a focus on affordable housing, that, that, that the opportunities for additional housing, that people can afford to live here, whether it's young folks who are returning home, whether it's seniors who are looking to retire on fixed incomes, whether it's families who are just trying to afford to take care of their children every day and, and provide a safe place to live. That, that's, that's an issue that I'll be bringing to, to focus or looking to continue to, to, to focus on in office. Issues of healthcare have been consistent over the, the time that I worked with Supervisor Parker. Access to healthcare, whether it's access through Esperanza Care for those who are left uninsured with the Affordable Care Act, whether it's the county's delivery of trauma care through Nativedad Medical Center, the county's clinic system, the number of women who give birth in Monterey County on Medi-Cal. The county has tremendous responsibilities in terms of the delivery of quality healthcare to our residents and ensuring our systems are effective and accessible to our, to our community. Issues of climate change and the need to focus on both our, our resiliency to what's coming, as well as the opportunities to continue mitigating the effects, is, is going to, I think, become a growing issue as we deal with fires and ocean level rise, with our transportation systems, with our, our communication systems. So I do hope to be able to bring some focus on, on those issues. And then unexpected, when I, when I, when I decided to run for office, but what has effectively consumed the majority of my time since March has been the county's critical role in responding to COVID and the pandemic. And I, I believe that we will spend a good portion of this next year focusing on the immediate response to COVID, as well as beginning to plan for how we can recover from the impacts of this pandemic on so many of our residents who are suffering, who are sitting in food lines, who have lost employment, who have lost their, their businesses as a result. And as we begin to try to coordinate recovery with the state, coordinate recovery with our cities, coordinate recovery with our chambers and our small businesses, I believe that the county has a role to play in that, and I look forward to partnering and working with everyone on that, on that role. A couple other points I just want to make, communication. Jane, Supervisor Parker mentioned my commitment to communication and my, my, my passion for ensuring that we are communicating effectively. And for me, communication, that the county has a role, there's a lot that the county does, and we need to let the community know what it is we're doing in a way that's transparent and accountable. And that includes an opportunity to listen to the community and listen to our residents. The county needs to be hearing directly from the people who we serve so that we can effectively do our jobs. So I will actively continue to find opportunities to listen to the community, to find opportunities to bring the community voice into county government, and I'll be relying on all of you who are on this call right now to help make that happen. Finally, I want to just very briefly introduce my team. Yuri Anderson, our MPC trustee Yuri Anderson, has joined my team as Chief of Staff. I believe she's somewhere in the call here. And PG City Council member Jenny McAdams has joined my team as my executive administrator. So please welcome my, my staff. We are all available to work with you. Contact our office, find us on social media, contact us via email, watch for the online events that we'll be hosting over the next year. And I, it's an honor to join this board. I appreciate the, the commitment that every one of my colleagues has to do the homework, the desire to be of service as a public servant, to do the right thing for the right reasons. It's an honor to join each one of you, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with you more closely in the coming years. So thank you again, it's an honor to be here. And I will pass the floor back to Chair Lopez.
Congratulations again, Supervisor Askew. Next, we're going to go over to Supervisor Alejo for some comments. Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank, thank you. I first want to give a special thanks to my mother, Maria Luisa Covarubias, for swearing me in today. My mom is, like many of our moms, is just someone who has continued to support me ever since day one, and there is no more important person who could have done me this honor this morning. I also want to thank the rest of my family for tuning in, including my sister Ruth, a public school teacher, and my stepfather Jose, my amazing staff, Linda Gonzalez, Javier Gomez, and Giselle Cortez, and certainly all my friends as well. This year, as many of you know, has certainly been a difficult one in my personal life after losing my father, Tomas Alejo Jr., in October, after a 10-year battle with bone cancer. And it has made me reflect more on my family, my community, and the work that I do as a public servant. It is truly an honor to once again serve the hard work- It is truly an honor to once again serve the hardworking people of Salinas and Monterey County as your county supervisor, which has been the best job I've had in my entire life. This past year has also been challenging for our nation, certainly the most difficult year in our lifetime. It has been tragic to lose so many of our county residents to this pandemic, but also the hundreds of thousands of more fellow Americans who have tragically passed away across our nation, Americans of all ages, backgrounds, ethnicities, races, religions, and genders. And I am reminded of the words of Dr. King, who once said that a true measure of a person is not where we stand in times of comfort or convenience, but where one stands in times of challenge and controversy. This pandemic has truly tested us more than ever and I am proud that as a Board of Supervisors, we have led in so many ways to protect our residents and our most vulnerable, including our farm workers, immigrants, and our homeless residents, whether through our policies, resolutions, our budget, our legislative advocacy, or in our federal courts. We must always remember that when we lift the most vulnerable in our communities, we lift everyone else up in this great state of California. I'm proud that in the last year, I pushed for our first shelter in place order last March 16th, and the next day it was approved by our board. We were the first county in the state to advocate for priority testing, PPE, priority vaccinations for our agricultural workers, and we created the first Ag Worker Protection Advisory and the Farm, and Farm Worker Hotline in the nation. I was proud to advocate for the creation of the Rent and Utility Assistance Program and the continuous tenant protections against evictions during this pandemic. We also created the 2 million plus loan program for our small businesses and the 1 million loan program for immigrant businesses who didn't qualify for any form of federal relief just because of their status. Most recently, in partnership with COPA, we approved a record $5 million program to put community health workers out to target our most impacted neighborhoods in these coming months. And after the heartbreaking photo of two little girls accessing the internet outside a fast food restaurant in East Salinas, I pushed for statewide measures to address the digital divide and wrote the first op ed with other legislators and elected officials proposing a statewide multi-billion dollar broadband infrastructure bond. And today, we have a proposed $10 billion bond measure and several other legislative proposals moving forward in Sacramento this coming legislative session. This year, the Latino community also reached another historic milestone in our state's history. I was proud to have spearheaded five press conferences all over the state pushing for the first Latina or Latino to get appointed to the vacant U.S. Senate seat in California in 170 years. And just before Christmas, Governor Newsom appointed my friend Secretary of State Alex Padilla to serve in that historic role. This year, I look forward to also work on getting my high school ethnic studies bill signed into law to move our inner lake water tunnel project and reservoir maintenance work to the next phases, to get more affordable housing built in our county, and to open our new and first ever year-round homeless navigation center right here in Salinas. Lastly, I take to heart the many lives that we have lost during this pandemic and will continue to work hard to curb it and to help ensure a successful rollout of our vaccination program in the months ahead so we can turn the tide on this crisis that confronts us all. Once again, thank you to the people of District One for entrusting in me this important responsibility to be your champion for every decision before this Board of Supervisors. We are Monterey County strong, we are Salinas strong, and we'll get through this pandemic together. Thank you, Mr. Chair, muchas gracias.
Congratulations again Supervisor Alejo. At this point, I'd like to turn to Supervisor Mary Adams for some comments. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank my dear friend Judge Richard Silver for his kind remarks and for swearing me in. But I think even more importantly, I want to thank you for your, your wise comments about the future and about our approach to really resolving the issue of the pandemic. Thank you so much for your, your thoughts and wisdom. I always respect them so much. Congratulations to Wendy. I'm very excited to have the opportunity to work with you, Wendy, in another role. I want to thank you so much for coming forward and agreeing to run, to take on these challenges ahead. Congratulations, Luis. I'm very happy that you won reelection and your comments at the end just let me know how much in fact we do share as far as what we want to see for the future of our community. Five years ago, when I was running for the position of District Supervisor, Monterey County, I said that I would listen, that I would learn, and I would lead. And as example of listening, in the first year of office as Chair of the Board, at my behest, we had listening sessions in each district to poll how the community wanted to spend and invest these new county income dollars that we had from cannabis. The county, the residents responded, and they said that the issues of importance to them were health, education, safety, and self-sufficiency. These are very broad issues that reach deeply into our ability to thrive. I learned so much when I listened to our constituents. And speaking of learning, if there's one thing I've learned, is that to succeed, you must have collaboration. I think I heard Supervisor Parker say that, I heard Supervisor Askew say that, and I know that Supervisor Alejo, as well as Supervisor Phillips and Lopez all share that thought. Speaking of learning, one thing that I have learned as well is that Mother Nature has her own way. It was a wild ride in my first year when we had the Sobranis fire, the atmospheric river, the mudslides, and the biggest thing of all, the destruction of the bridge at Pfeiffer Canyon, which essentially shut down the road that was the length between Canada and Mexico, if you want to look at it that way. When I think of collaboration, I think of the success that we had in pulling back that bridge in just less than eight months. It was a huge feat, but the reason that we were able to do that was because of the collaboration that we had. We had the support of government from the top all the way down. It was really an unbelievable example of what people can do when they choose to pull together in the same direction. I think now, as we look at the pandemic, that's the kind of effort that we have to have. We have to marshal all of our forces and ensure that we're working in the same direction. My mask is vetsing me, so forgive me as I bust with it. My opportunity has to lead has been both humbling and also an honor. In my first year under my leadership as Board Chair, we were voted to join with our colleagues in Santa Cruz County as the first members of Monterey Bay Community Power, now the Central Coast Community Energy. This decision allowed us to lay the groundwork for alternative, renewable, cost-effective, and cleaner energy. This effort now spans Central Coast from Santa Cruz to Santa Barbara, providing clean environment, clean energy for our environment. There are many things for which I am proud, but things that I would not have been able to do without collaboration, like effectuating, leveraging millions of dollars for affordable housing by joining the Monterey Bay Housing Coalition, or providing 700, more than $750,000 to small businesses for relief during the pandemic. And of course, continuing the work that we started at United Way by addressing root causes of critical problems such as homelessness. And now our investment that we have made, a significant investment in getting to the root cause of the spread of COVID in our community. This is an issue that determines the health and economic outcome of our future. The key to success that I have learned is exactly what I said, it's collaboration and its partnerships. A vision, a vision will not be accomplished without the support, the guidance, the talent, and the experience of the many dedicated staff that we have in Monterey County. From the county administrative office to the building inspectors, from the healthcare workers to the road repair crews, these people give their lives to help the residents of District Five and our entire county to thrive. Without them, we would founder. There is much ahead to do. We have made some progress on key issues on which I ran, including water, transportation, workforce and affordable housing, fire and safety programs, and programs for families and children. But there are three things at the top of my list on which I really want to focus. Transparency and accountability in government, smart decisions on our approach to next steps in stopping COVID, and, and finally, a solution to a regional water supply. I use this pen often when I'm working. It has a fish on it. And I think of why I use this is that fishing reminds me of government, and that is, to get anything accomplished, it takes a lot of patience. My life has been dedicated to public service and I never forget whom I serve. As your supervisor, I have the honor of hearing your hopes for our community and then working towards solutions that make people's lives better in Monterey County, and we are getting results. It's an honor to serve four more years as your District Five Monterey County Supervisor. Thank you.
Congratulations Supervisor Adams. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Supervisor Phillips for any comments. Supervisor Phillips.
All right, I'm on, am I on? Okay. Well, I'm sitting over here, I'm the only one that doesn't have a, a role in this a little bit, but I do congratulate my two colleagues who were reelected Supervisor Leo and Supervisor Adams. I look forward to working with them. And to the new Supervisor, Supervisor Askew, we look forward to working with you. And we got to be nice to you since you look like you're going to be the Chair this year, but I can think of no one like Chris before you, who is better prepared, having come through the, the ranks as working for Jane and him working for Simone. It's probably the best learning experience. You, you get up to speed and know what you're doing a lot sooner than the rest of us who come in because there's a lot to learn in this job. So I look, congratulations to Wendy, and I look forward to working with you in, in the next, at least next two years. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Phillips. I just wanted to take an opportunity as well to thank and congratulate my colleagues. Thank you for stepping up to serve. I know that in a time like the one we're facing now, it's not an easy decision to jump back into the fire, but having watched Supervisor Alejo and Supervisor Adams lead through this pandemic, I know that your heart is in the right place and our community is better for your leadership. So thank you for stepping up, for taking on these critically important roles in this incredibly difficult time, to lead from the front because we, as a community, need your leadership. And the fact that you were willing to serve and ran unopposed shows that our community recognizes your leadership and understands that you're coming from a place where the betterment of everybody in Monterey County's lives is the focus. And so I appreciate both of you and your leadership on behalf of all the citizens of the Third District, having been able to serve as Chairs this year, for this particular difficult year, I want to thank you for stepping up. And I know that the next four years are going to be successful because both of you are at the dais fighting for your communities. So thank you for your leadership. And Supervisor Askew, congratulations. Supervisor Phillips is right. We, we both come from a similar cloth in that we started at the bottom and worked our way up. And to take these roles in a way that our community supports us in stepping into new shoes to serve in a different capacity with the experience behind us shows that you're ready. You have the understanding of the way the government works, the way the county works for its people, and you have ideas to better. And for stepping up to throw your name in the hat and say, I'm here and ready to serve, I congratulate you for your victory and I look forward to working side by side with you, knowing that we have a lot yet left to accomplish on the experience that we have coming from the ground up. And I look forward to what some of that might be. And I, I thank you for, again, for stepping up to serve, especially during a difficult time like this. I have some additional comments about the past year, but I'm going to save those for the next point. But I do congratulate every one of my colleagues. It is a true, it, it really is a, a big milestone to be reelected and to run without opposition is also a milestone in itself. And to Supervisor Askew, again, welcome. I just want to say that I look forward to working with each and every one of you for the next four years of, of your service here at the county. At this point, what I want to do is move into our next item, which is actually number one on our agenda, which is to nominate and elect members of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors to serve as the 2021 Chair and Vice Chair. At this point, what I'd like to do is see if there's any questions about the process from county supervisors. Not seeing any hands going up. I'm going to go ahead and invite the public to share any public comment with us before we take up this item. We ask that you do so by either hitting star nine from a landline or cell phone or using the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen here in the Zoom world. I will give you just a second, just in case there's anybody who wishes to make a public comment on this item. Okay, having seen no hands gone up, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this item and bring it back to the board. At this point, I will open it up to see what the will of the board may be.
Mr. Chair?
Yes Supervisor Phillips.
I would nominate as Chair Supervisor Askew and as Vice Chair Supervisor Adams.
And I see a second from Supervisor Alejo. I know our audio is a little different this morning, but I do see that signal. So I have a motion in second for Supervisor Askew as Chair and Supervisor Adams as Vice Chair. At this point, I would like to ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Yeah, they have to unmute us. Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Askew?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. The motion carries. And with that, we have a new Chair and Vice Chair for the Board of Supervisors. So with that being done, I'd like to make a few brief comments before we go ahead and switch chairs, whatever that may look like in this new world of Zoom. I just want to, I want to thank my colleagues for standing together during this incredibly difficult year of 2020. Supervisor Alejo pointed out so many of our achievements that we were able to push across the finish line, and there's so many more irons in the fire that we put in place. You know, one that he didn't touch on, but I wanted to make sure we look back on was the census that happened in the middle of all of the craziness that was 2020. And to have a higher count in a year like that was a true achievement. I know most counties didn't achieve that, but I'm thankful for the leadership of this board, for the investments in the census, understanding the political ramifications, the financial ramifications, and the realities that we were all staring down the barrel of during 2020. I think in a year like this, I, there's not too many, there's not too much I want to say except thank you. I want to thank my wife, Huzmin. It was, it was a year that took me away from family a lot, but it also had a little silver lining. In January, at the end of January of the last year, I welcomed my first child, my son Theo, to the world. And being able to actually sneak out sometimes at about six o'clock and join in the bath time fun because I was in the house doing Zoom meetings was my little silver lining for 2020. You know, having been able to see him grow up and understand more deeply the decisions that I was making and how that they, they would impact his life as he grows up in the Salinas Valley, it was a different year. And it really left a big mark on my life. And I want to thank my colleagues for the opportunity to serve as Chair, for the opportunity to lead in that capacity through such a difficult time. I want to thank our community for standing together. I know that I can't even put the number on how many food drives we participated in, how many mask drives and handouts my staff took on. And I want to thank my staff, my chief Priscilla Barber, my aide Maricela Lara, and Sandra Oliveras, who really, they kept me together during this incredibly difficult year and kept me in all the right places. I know folks don't really understand, but with Zoom, you're able to attend so many more meetings. It's weird to say, but there's no travel time, right? You just, you hit a switch and next thing you know, you're on another meeting. And they were able to keep me in so many different capacities, right on top of the business and keep things moving. And I want to thank them for all of their service in this incredibly difficult year to, you know, get the district moving in the right direction. And I know that the focus was almost solely on COVID in terms of what folks were reading about, but we achieved a lot as a board. And Supervisor Alejo pointed out a lot of those, but I do also want to share the, the thought that I have about RMA and the fact that we were able to really work through that difficult issue and make sure that those now two agencies are better able to serve the people of Monterey County. I'm proud of the work we accomplished this year. I was able to participate in socially distant ribbon cuttings for new roads in, in my district that needed work for so long that came in unique partnerships, like working with the City of Gonzalez and the Solid Waste Authority to redo Gloria on Iverson Road. You know, and redoing certain stretches that we're committed to under Measure X. This board has held its commitments on high and they followed through on those commitments. And so I'm proud of what we were able to achieve, as well as some of the safety projects up in Supervisor Phillips's district. Don't worry Supervisor Phillips, I know we've got to spread the love around and I've seen some good achievements posted on the Monterey County Public Works page here recently. So I just want to say thank you. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for this opportunity. It was, it felt a lot like we built a plane in midair as we went through 2020, but we did it. And I think for, you know, we still have challenges ahead of us, but I look forward to continuing to work shoulder to shoulder with each one of you to make sure that our community moves forward in the, in the most efficient, effective, and obviously safely possible. So thank you for that opportunity. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand the virtual gavel over to Supervisor Askew. There you go.
All right, Chair Lopez, thank you so much for your comments. I think what we're going to do at this point is pass the floor around to other supervisors who would, to make some comments of appreciation for the work that Chair Lopez did for us over the past year. So I'll go ahead and start. I see Supervisor Alejo on my screen, so I'll pass it over to you Supervisor Alejo. Oh, and we need to unmute Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you. First of all, to our new Chair and Vice Chair, Wendy Askew and Mary Adams. I want to, first of all, congratulate, congratulate both of you. First of all, Supervisor Adams, I've seen, we've been watching how you've effectively represented your constituents in District Five, and certainly you've been out there working through difficult times from bridges falling down in Pfeiffer and Big Sur to dealing with a lot of the tourist issues and always just being really attentive to your district. And so it's, once again, it's an honor to be reelected at the same time with you and being sworn in together once more today. And Wendy, I just wanted to really thank you for your hard work, first of all, as a staffer, and now as a member of this Board of Supervisors. It will be an honor for me to serve with you also. I think anyone who has served as a staffer before comes in with not only a good experience and insight, but also a real closer sense of having to work with constituents, solve problems, and a different sense of humility in doing this work and treating people with respect and dignity. I had previously served in that role at the State Capitol, and I think it made me a better legislator and policymaker and problem solver. So I look forward to your leadership, and you're coming in at a most critical, most challenging time. And so thank you for willing to step up and serve the people of Monterey County, and I know you would do well. And I know all five of us are going to continue to work so well on doing a lot of great things and leading, doing a lot more first, as we have for the last several years together. And Supervisor Phillips, I'm glad we're all here together, but I really wanted to, so to take off my Panama hat, my virtual Panama hat off, Supervisor Lopez, I think Supervisor Lopez, you have served very well. I think there's no better person who has managed meetings virtually and pushed for advocacy to make sure that we were as most accessible to our residents during these times, including pushing for bilingual translation. And even today, to see the sign language translation, it really shows you that we have to be even better at making sure we're accessible to all our residents with, even with this new technology that sometimes has its limitations. But you always did it very well. And even the additional meetings we had with all the mayors every Monday, the briefings we had with all our staff, just huddling and putting our minds together to see what more that we could do. And so I want to thank you for all your hard work this year, a lot more ahead of us. Certainly, I think none of us feel like we've done enough, because I think we haven't. There's a lot more we have to do to save lives in our district, and certainly all our county staff. It's an acknowledgement to all the county staff that work with the U.S. Chair on a lot of decisions, a lot of key decisions that needed to be made. I think you did a good job because we also have a great team here at Monterey County, the most professional staff, really good minds, and really some of the most dedicated public servants we have. So along with saluting you, I salute all our department heads, all our rank and file county employees who continue to serve the people of Monterey County despite the limitations, despite the challenging times. And so I really want to congratulate you on your leadership. You really showed that you could step up to really lead and make bold decisions during a time of such a challenge for our county. So with that, thank you for your services this year.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Alejo. I'll move right along to Supervisor Phillips for any comments.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Askew, and again, congratulations. But I can't imagine a tougher year to walk into. This year, we got hit with everything. And I was, got to say, I was really impressed with how our Chair led us during that time. There wasn't ever a time when we needed something and I had to get ahold of him, and he wasn't immediately available. He was like the roving linebacker. He was everywhere, filling in the gap, making the tackle. And it wasn't an amazing year, especially using the internet and Zoom. I was just thinking, I was really glad we had a young tech savvy guy at the helm. I still refer to the refrigerator, my kids give me a bad time, I refer to the refrigerator as an icebox. And they say, "How old are you Dad?", and I said, "My grandmother always had an icebox." I used to have to open the door for the iceman coming in on that. So I do remember that. But it was a good thing we had you at the helm. You did a great job. Thank you for your work and dedication.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Adams, if we could unmute Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Askew. I look forward to saying that word a lot in the upcoming year. And thank you particularly immediate past Chair Lopez. And I guess I'm kind of pushing up against John Phillips, the other long and the tooth supervisor here, because he thinks of roving linebacker, I think of the Energizer Bunny. And Chris, that's exactly what you were to me. Every time I would call you, you were always there. I so appreciated it. One of the saddest things to me about the pandemic, or among the saddest things, was not being able to sit next to you at the Board of Supervisors meetings, because you were always so helpful to me with things like technology, where you were so able to kind of tell me what I could do here or do there. But in addition to that, because of the experience that you brought to the board, I really just very much admire the things you were able to accomplish. I again agree with my previous, the previous speakers, my colleagues, saying that what you faced was just so very difficult. And in addition to that, having the joy in your life of having your first child and the very wonderful support that your beautiful wife Huzmin was able to provide to you was really, really wonderful. I'm just so very thankful that we've had the opportunity to work under your leadership. It was really encouraging. And there is nothing quite like new life to really breathe hope into all of the thoughts that we have. And you were able to do that by sharing the love and the excitement that you had with the birth of your baby. So thank you again for all of your time and effort, and I look forward to serving with you on the dais soon.
Thank you Supervisor Adams. Just a quick announcement that our ASL interpreter had to drop off the line. She was only able to be on for one hour today, but I do want to remind and encourage anyone who has the desire to participate in county supervisor meetings that we do have a commitment to provide access. So if you need access, please let us know, and we can work to make sure that that is available for you, whether it's translation, ASL, or any other accommodations. I'll move right along. Chair Lopez, I think I came onto the county board with Supervisor Parker right around the same time that you joined the county family. And it has just been an awesome experience to grow and learn with you. I think those first couple of years really, as a staffer, really did feel like drinking out of a fire hose. And the opportunity to really go deep on issues as a staffer, to get to know staff well, has, I've watched it serve you well in your transition into the supervisor's role. And I'll be looking to have some conversations with you about other tips that I should be aware of in this transition. I want to also thank you, Chris, you know, you really did step into a chairship at a time when we didn't know that we would not only be building a plane as we were flying it, but you would be taking off in a plane as you were building it and then flying it with a new CIO, with a new county council, with a new executive leadership team. I just, I've watched very carefully all of the steps that you've taken to find ways to increase communication, to bring our mayors in, to develop the board briefings that are held regularly, to fight for the regular media briefings, and to really look for innovative and effective ways to meet the needs of the community as they continue to arise. So I am very excited to be working with you Supervisor Lopez, and thank you for all of your leadership this past year. I'll move right into my comments as incoming Chair. And the few things that really stand out to me, we've had a lot of talking today. But one of the things that I, that I think about when I think about leadership is really the imperfect progress that we make and the incremental nature that policy sometimes moves in. And as Chair, I look to, I will look to each of you on the board for, for your guidance and to listen to what your goals and priorities are so that we can collectively look for ways on the agenda to move those things forward. Imperfect progress in that, you know, I know how tenacious I am and have been described as. I know how, you know, how deeply Supervisor Alejo pushes on an issue when he cares about it. I've seen Mary Adams, you know, just dig her heels in when there's something that she is passionate about. And I believe that, that our opportunity to lead is a collective of that passion and that tenacity. And that when we bring all five of us together on the dais, that we really can make tremendous progress and tremendous change for the benefit of our community. But oftentimes, it is imperfect, and we're constantly circling back to listen to how it plays out in the community and to make adjustments. So my commitment to you is that I'm always going to be listening and watching for how we can continue moving things forward together. I do want to take just a quick moment to thank our county staff, every single one of our 5,400 county employees who have really risen to the challenge this year, you know, whether it's on a dime, moving to work from home, whether it's being reassigned as an emergency service worker, whether it's having your responsibilities changed to become an immunizer or, you know, COVID testing coordinator. We really have had an incredible county commitment to meet the needs of our community, and it's been incredible. And I know that people are feeling burnt out. I know that people are feeling exhausted, and we're not done yet. We're not out of this yet. So, you know, we're going to be here, listening to what your needs are and doing our best to make sure that you can continue serving the public that we're here to, to take care of. I want to also thank my family. I missed them earlier in my comments. I'm here with my mom, I'm here with my husband, and I'm here with my son today. And they've really been the foundation on which any opportunity that I have to step out into the community as a public servant is built. So thank you, Mom. Thank you Quinn. Thank you Dominic. And with that, I will pass it back around again for some final closing remarks, congratulating our new Chair, or anything else that you feel the need to share. We'll go right over to Supervisor Adams. We'll go backwards this time. Thank you. And if we could unmute Supervisor Adams, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much Chair Askew. I must say, I feel like I've spoken so much today. All I can say is that I'm looking forward to 2021. I think all of us are. And as you have mentioned, communication, collaboration, those are some of the key words that I promise to work with you on in any way that I can. It's an honor to get to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Adams. We'll go next to Supervisor Phillips.
No, we've said enough, but thank you. Congratulations again, and I'm ready to go to work.
Awesome. Thank you Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Alejo?
Thank you. We skipped over Chris, but, Madam Chair, I want to say that this year, under your leadership, it's going to be the most critical one for Monterey County. That rollout of a successful vaccination program is imperative to get through all the different phases, to get our essential workers, to get our seniors, and also a reopening of our schools. We know that there's, that's on the minds of so many parents, including our childcare centers. That's going to be pivotal for us, and not, not any one of us could do it alone. The five of us working together, working with our health director, our public health department, our hospitals, all our professionals, that's how we're going to make the best, most informed decisions. And I hope that we're strategic. I hope that we are successful. I think we're all hoping to get back to our normalcy here in our, in our everyday lives. But there's some big tasks that are up ahead of us, and I look forward to working arm in arm with you and carrying those out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much Supervisor Alejo. And Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say congratulations to you as you take over this chair position. Hopefully, we're landing the plane this year. You know, this pandemic, hopefully, we can finally put it to rest. I think we used the plane to put out some wildfires last year, too. You know, when I think about what that gavel represents and the leadership that you are now stepping into, I want you to know that you have an incredible team behind you, not just on the dais. I want to give a shout out to our CIO McKee and our county council Gerard, as well as the entire team, all the way down to the bottom. The calls that I got this year from staff who were stepping out of their traditional role to help families who were isolating from COVID to talk about the rewarding work that they were doing and the fact that they were passionate about being able to make a difference in our community. You're taking over as the figurehead of an organization which is doing incredible work, and it's only possible because of the employees who give their heart every single day. And I know that you know that, but it's, when I, when I turn over this gavel now to you, I want you to know that it comes with their faith, and it comes with their understanding of the tough decisions you have to make. And so I wish you the best in this year, and I promise you that we've got your back. We're going to work side by side to make all the positive difference that our community needs. But just know that it is those 5,000 employees plus that you spoke of, who were all here today representing, knowing that they're the ones that are the boots on the ground, making a difference for our communities. So again, proud to have you as our Chair. Madam Chair, we wish you the best in this coming year and know that we're pushing along right next to you to make this thing happen and make sure that we get the best possible outcomes for every resident in Monterey County. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Lopez. I really appreciate your words and your friendship and look forward to continuing, continuing to work with you. With that, we will be recessing. I want to thank all 151 participants who've joined us today. I can picture you overflowing in the board chambers. You are all welcome to join us again when we reconvene at 1:30 for some public comments, a presentation about the county's response to COVID, including an update on vaccine distribution, as well as a few other critical items, including a conversation about our board committee assignments. The new Zoom link at 1:30 when we resume will be different than the Zoom link that we have scheduled right now. That link will be 224397747. So please join us again at 1:30 while we continue our work representing the community, and look forward to seeing you then. And with that, we will adjourn.